Now bow and we ask God wherever there's any sin or wrongdoing, Lord, we ask for forgiveness. Oh, God corporately right now in Jesus' name. And Father, we're always so very grateful for our leadership. Uh, thank you for how you continue to protect our Mayor Jackie Warner and her family, keep her hedge of protection around her. Not only her, God, but the rest of the commissioners and their families, God, we thank you and we pray for our leadership of the city of Hope Mills. And always, Lord, we are so humbled by the service of our first responders. Oh, Lord, and how they willingly put their lives in harm's way to protect the citizens here at Hope Mills. And all around, uh, the place of Fayetteville, God, we, we just thank you for them and God, we ask that you would keep your warring angels around them. Shield them, God, when their back is turned to danger. And we thank you now and God, as we move forward now with the agenda. We always call on you, God, to endow us with your godly wisdom. We have man's wisdom, but you alone, God, are the one that direct the paths of humanity and we thank you, Lord. And we commit everything into your hands this evening in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Oh, say can you see? By the dawn's early light. What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Thank you. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion of second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. At this time, we have some special, um, presentations. And I'm gonna ask if they would not mind, if the commissioners would go down front. And I will let you, uh, present the certificates as I read the names. And I'm gonna let all of you participate because we got quite a lot of certificates to give. And if, I'll, I'll hand them over to Mayor Protem. And that way we can, uh, give out these special certificates of recognition. Right down there, right down there. That way I can, I'll, I'll say, I'll read them and we'll, we'll do this since we're on a time crunch. Well, this recognition is important. As many of you know, we just completed our Lake Celebration, the party at the lake, and we also had Fourth of July. And with that, we had a tremendous support from everyone in our town. We had our, uh, different groups that not only helped us, but they also did, uh, extra hours. And it was a fantastic celebration. We had, uh, not only did we have great turnout, but from Saturday all the way till Wednesday, only kudos to the town. So our town staff has made this possible along with some special people. And as I call your name, if you're, if, uh, possible, if you'll come to the front. And then I want everybody to stay at the front until we get all these done. The first we're gonna recognize is our Hope Mills cert team. And that's Gregory Dickerson. Melody Dickerson. Mark Bryan. Mike Boast. Bonnie Boast. Evelyn Barnes. Renee Carlisle. Pam Hatton. David Ices. Monica Myrick. Jeff Neto. The Cummins County Cert Group, Ruth Farley. Marlin Scott. And we may have, we may have, um, some of our sponsors here, but if not, um, I'll call their, the name of the business that sponsored the Lake Celebration out. And if there's someone here with that business, if you'll come forward, if not, we'll make sure we get it to the business. Um, BB&amp;T. Cape Fear Flooring and Restoration. They've sponsored our beach dance event and paid for the DJ. Hope Mills Chamber of Commerce, they were the event flyer sponsor for the Lake Celebration. Is there anyone here from the chamber? Cumulus Media. They were here for all the events and, uh, broadcast each event so that we can make sure everybody knew what was going on. Ken Laws, they provided food for heroes on the water and the Hope Mills Police and Fire Departments and volunteers on July 4th and also on Sunday. Members Credit Union, they were cardboard boat race sponsor. And they also, uh, they were the big sponsoring that they paid for the T-shirts that we used. And that was a thousand dollar sponsor for the cardboard boat race. The VFW Post 10-630, they sponsored the cardboard boat race and they were the ones that provided the trophies. And I think Commissioner Bellflowers can accept. Uh, Walmart for participating in the, in the Lake Celebration, they also provided a gift card. Um, he didn't wanna know, didn't wanna be receiving a certificate, but Greeley Mitchell, because he was an event sponsor, not along with being on the Lake Committee, but he sponsored the beach dan event, beach dance event. Greeley Mitchell. Chris Hall was responsible for the Hope Mills Heroes on the Water Celebration. Sandy Hardy was on our Lake Celebration Committee. Patricia Jenkins was on our Lake Celebration Committee. Robert, Bob Kretsu, and he, we know he's, I'll take his, he's our pastor that was in charge of the Church at the Lake and also the Art and Jazz Festival. Kenduwana McCray. She was responsible for, uh, art and jazz and she also helped with Church at the Lake. Jessica Segrows from the Hope Mills Chamber. And she worked, uh, on the committee, but she also helped with the beach dance. Brent Spivey was chairman of the Cardboard Boat Race. Jan Spel worked with the Chamber. Jessie Bellflowers was our board liaison on our Lake Celebration Committee. Commissioner Legg was our board liaison on the Lake Celebration Committee. Then for our Fire Fr- Fire Department, we have firefighter Lee Brock. Firefighter Jeffrey Dodson. Firefighter Jacob Geddy. Assistant Chief Wayne Dutterer. Deputy Fire Chief Steve Lopez. Fire Chief Chuck Hodges. Not only did they provide the, the water rescue for anything that might've gone wrong with the kayaks and the cardboard boat race, but they also were the judges for our peers. And they were also there diligently every day to make sure things ran smoothly. Extra hours, extra time, all. Next, we had Sergeant Lee Sumners with our Police Department. Officer Brad Alley. Officer Codani Joseph. Officer Anthony Mendez. Officer Louis Menos. Officer Maurice Perez. Officer Tony Robinette. Officer Derek Rowland. Officer, um, this is Derek Rowlands. And Chief for Chero, I don't have one for you, but by golly, you were here and you worked hard. So we need to make sure the chief gets one too. Alright, from our Parks and Rec staff, Jamie Bahama, Tim Bright. Keith Bryant. April Dublin. Maxie Dove. Annie Vonco. Megan Hawkins. James Willie Hobbs. Paulette Hobbs. Casey Ivy. Lisa Ryan. Julie Smackcheck. Smockdeck? I knew I'd get that one wrong. Gary Smith. James Washington. And Kenny Bullock. I would also like to ask our, the representatives not to receive a special certificate because they're wearing theirs. They're wearing their count, crown and they're wearing their sashes. But I'd like to recognize if she's here, we Miss Harper Sullivan. We have Junior Miss Alexandra Jackson. Young Miss Bailey Karantin Quatron. Teen Miss Carrie Dees. And Miss Hope Mills Lydia Ann Dilday. If these two queens would come forward, not only did they come to every event, but they stayed. So just know they represented us well already and congratulations to them. I think, I think that we need a round of applause. And something that I think is very, very important that, um, this group, not only did they, um, work tirelessly for many days. And our commissioners attended the festivities. And we had not only a good representation for Hope Mills, but there's someone special that I would like to recognize from the board and something special that we want to do. And I'm reading a proclamation now, so all of you will know, because I'm sure you would all, will agree with this. This person has been invaluable employee of the Town of Hope Mills. He has served this community well since October 2006. Three, these years of service have been marked by numerous hours of selfless dedication to ensure all town events are flawless and to the best interest of the community. As he has worked for the betterment of the Parks and Rec Department. Through the performance of his duties and responsibilities as the Parks and Recreation Director of the Town of Hope Mills, he has made excellent and constructive contributions to the Parks and Recreation Department in our town. And now therefore, our Jackie Warner Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills proclaimed Friday, July the 20th, 2018 as Kenny Bullock Day in Hope Mills. And this And I, and I want you to know that on this special day, we ask that you give him all the special attention you can. And also know that something that's very important, he was tasked this year by this board. And it was very awkward at the time that they wanted this parade not to have any gaps, not to be too long, and to move fast and move from point A to point B and allowed him for an hour. The parade not only was beautiful, it was 59 minutes. Congratulations, great job. We're not giving you off, but we're gonna give you some special attention. Alright, thanks everyone for making these, these events great and thank you for all your help contributing to the success of, of Lake Celebration and the July 4th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will.
We'll have to distribute those.
I know, I did.
We'll, we'll, we'll support you just like y'all support us. Thank you so much.
Kenny, that day you get all kinds of special attention from us.
And those cert team members that came to support the rest know that we appreciate everything you do. And that we'll call on you because we know you come when we call. Thank you. Alright. At this time, I'd like to recognize Joel Strickland. And, uh, he is gonna presenting to us the Hope Mills Congestion Management Plan. And again, this is, um, the final plan. And you have someone here with you from Kiddlesam too?
I do.
Okay, I'll turn it over to, to Joel Strickland who is with FAMPO.
If you can bear with me a second.
Yes, sure.
Uh, we'd be remiss not to recognize our mayor. She, uh, showed tremendous leadership during the Lake Celebration. She worked tirelessly through the heat with, uh, on every event.
Yes, she did.
We need to give her a round of applause. She really worked hard.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. It was time for our party and we did it. Now I'll turn it over to you, Joel.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you for letting us come tonight. Um, I came a little over a year ago to this board and told you we were gonna be starting this plan. We've had the money set aside for, how long, Mayor, four or five years to do this plan and we finally got
2013.
2013, okay, we finally got around to doing it. Um, and just to give you a little recap, um, we went through a request for proposals, um, about a year and a half, two years ago. We hired the Kiddlesam Group, um, out of Wilmington to do this plan for the town. To look at ways to relieve congestion within the Hope Mills town limits. And, um, not just looking at roads, but looking at multimodal ways to relieve congestion. So looking at all sorts of, uh, forms of transportation. And we also tasked them with looking a little bit outside the box at, um, some ways to relieve congestion as we didn't want to disrupt the, the natural characteristics of the town. Um, so with me tonight, I've got Mr. Zach Bug from Kiddlesam. And, um, he's gonna give you the, the overview and give you a presentation.
Good evening. Thanks for inviting us today. So I have about, um, 10 or 15 minutes worth. I won't go long. Um, I wanted to give you a little bit of an idea of the project background, um, the public engagement that we did, um, as a series of public meetings here in the town right next door. Um, how we assessed the needs of the town, um, and looked at a, a series of alternatives and then eventually made a recommendation. Um, like to share with you the product recommendations that were laid out in the plan. Um, and then the outcomes, um, that we're hoping to see. Um, as a background, this is a part of the federal congestion management process that's required, um, every several years for each major MPO to outline a series of, um, projects that they see the need for potential safety and mobility needs. Um, so that process was initiated last year in May. Um, we got started kinda around June, July. Um, visited Hope Mills for the first time in August, so it's been a really great, um, experience to kinda see the town over the last year. Um, focusing on safety, connectivity, mobility, um, accessibility of all transportation users within the town limits. Through this process, we worked with, uh, FAMPO and also the public and the stakeholders to, uh, create a series of project goals and objectives. These closely resemble a lot of MPO's, uh, overall general project goals and objectives and I'll list them here. Um, I won't read the words off the screen here, but you can see we really are focusing on mobility, safety of all users. Trying to maintain the historic nature and context of the town. Um, and also provide connections between town landmarks such as the lake and the municipal park here. Um, a, a series of public engagement meetings, um, we got started back in September of last year. Had another one in December and then also, um, one in March. In September, we focused on, um, asking what the needs were in the town, um, based off of public comments. Also, um, formulating through working with the stakeholders, um, at the MPO and NCDOT and with the town here. Um, and also based off of, uh, data collection. So we focused on identifying the needs at that time, letting the public drive the process. Um, at the December meeting, we presented a set of alternatives, a set of, um, potential recommendations and got town feedback on that. Um, and then in March, we delivered the draft recommendations at that point and asked for just any final refinement and public comment. Um, we met with stakeholder group every time before we met with the, um, with the public to screen and refine our, our solutions. So we had a, a pretty good turnout at each of the public meetings. Um, they were weeknights here in the, um, Recreation Hall, uh, between 30 and 50 community members each. Um, we described different alternatives, different recommendations, looking at new sidewalks and crosswalks, bicycle treatments, um, potential roadway, major roadway treatments, and then also some intersection treatments. Um, we received feedback through public comment traditionally in the, uh, in-person setting and then also through an online survey and an online commenting map. It had a pretty strong, uh, social media and also online commenting presence. Um, I won't go into a lot of technical details here, but we really looked at, uh, a few different types of alternatives. The challenge of this project was that it was pretty open-ended. Um, it was also a good opportunity, made for a really interesting, fun project. Um, there was no set corridor that we were trying to develop alternatives for. It was really, here's everything in the town, identify the needs and then pick and choose where the different alternatives come into play and where it makes sense to look at things. Um, so we looked at different roadway alternatives, different cross-sections. When you talk about what are the different things within the roadway right-of-way that you're looking at? And then also intersection treatments. Um, each alternative, uh, we really tried to base that on a series of performance measures that aligned with the project goals and objectives that we had listed a little bit earlier. Um, in terms of assessment methodology, um, these are some of the evaluation metrics and performance measures that we looked at. It was, um, just a, a few different things that had to do with, um, each of the different modes. There was a crash data, safety conflict type element in there. We looked at delays, vehicular delays, level of service, queuing. Um, and then another big part of this project where, which I think the MPO, um, this was a unique project for me because, um, it, it really focused on implementable solutions and not just pie in the sky, but what are the things that are gonna get NCDOT funding? How can we phrase the recommendations and really get this stuff built and funded? Um, instead of just saying, well, if we had everything, then we would do it this way. Um, so hopefully, um, that, that turns into some actual project work. So what are the recommendations? Uh, we looked at a, a series of cross-sections for different major corridors here in Hope Mills. Um, looking at Camden Road, Rockfish Road, Golfie Road, um, and then also, uh, a portion of Main Street. Looking at what are the number of lanes, um, and different sidewalk and bicycle treatments that, um, you could potentially put within that right-of-way. Um, not all of these cross-sections will fit within the existing right-of-way. There will be a few, um, a few easements along the way. But predominantly, we looked at things that are pretty context sensitive here. Um, and again, we, we gave a series of different renderings like this to the public and asked, which one would you prefer? And so what you see here is what was the favorite and then also what was kind of screened by us. For a ped bike type situation, we looked at, um, a series of just sidewalk needs across town. There's a, kind of a lack of general connectivity of the sidewalk network in town that was recognized by the public. Um, and, oh, we went through and just, we figured out if we had everything we wanted, then we would do kind of all of the pink lines on here. But if we had to prioritize, you would look at just the dark pink. Um, looking at things like how can you connect the major corridors, um, the major landmarks within town and really do the most bang for your buck, so to speak. Uh, we also looked at crosswalks and different, um, crosswalk treatments, both at signalized intersections and then, um, at unsignalized crosswalks, like out here across, uh, Rockfish Road. Um, we looked at 20 different areas and then proposed a series of treatments from a suite of treatments for each. Really looking at what was the most, uh, what made the most sense at each. Um, and again, this has all been put through a public commenting process and kind of working with the public to see, um, what was preferred. Um, the town established, um, kind of early on, uh, that, that they wanted to make a vision for public transportation within the town and having connections to other areas within the MPO. Um, and so we kind of built on a, a previously developed plan with FAST and some of the other stakeholders around the area. Um, and then really looking at where are the areas in town with the highest propensity for transit use? Um, and the highest need for transit, if there's people that don't have cars or a little bit more dense areas of town. Um, so this plan, it's, it's kind of an ultimate concept and we're not looking at the detail of having stops and service lines and everything like that. But if, this is meant to be kind of a vision, connecting to Cross Creek Mall and other landmarks within the area. Um, in terms of major roadway recommendations, uh, we wanted to come up with some big concepts that would kind of fall within the higher levels of the NCDOT prioritization list. Um, again, these, these were all public comments. So each of these kind of rose from, um, something that we heard in the public meeting that was reinforced by several comments. So the first is the orange lines here, um, that is kind of your traditional roadway widening, looking at going from two to four lanes. Um, Camden Road, Rockfish Road, Golfie Road, and then also Main Street. These are currently within the NCDOT, uh, funding process and they have funding allocated. But we really wanted to look at those and see, well, what if you did build those up? Uh, what would it do to traffic and kind of where is it, is widening the most necessary? The green lines here was the second alternative that we looked at. Um, it's really more conceptual as it's presented here, but it's really forming a little bit more of a roadway grid within town so that you don't have to use a major corridor such as Main Street to get around town. Um, looking at how do you connect some of the lower level local streets within town um, to provide that connectivity, both when you're walking and when you're driving. Uh, the pink line here is another somewhat conceptualized alternative. Uh, we didn't look at specific alignments yet, but, um, really prioritizing the NC 162 highway as a bypass of town and just providing another con, um, another connection there to I-95, um, where there is none right now. We also looked at a series of intersection concepts. Um, and what I'm showing you here are kind of the preferred concepts. But, um, in terms of the, the level of this study, we didn't really get down into looking at, um, uh, high detailed models and running a very detailed level of traffic analysis. We try to keep it a little bit higher level. Um, and this sketch that you see here is mostly, uh, preliminary and would not really involve, uh, specific right-of-way lines, driveway, curb cut and everything like that. So I kinda wanna preface what you see here with that. Um, this concept for Main Street and Camden Road was really developed off of, um, a series of performance measures that we identified and tried to prioritize some things over another with the realization that there's a trade-off at this intersection. This is one of the worst intersections in town. Um, we looked at traditional widening and adding turn lanes and found that the only way to really meet the level of service threshold the NCDOT would like to see, uh, which is LOSD in the design year, which was 2040, is to go to a six-lane section on one of these two streets. Um, and kind of hearing from, uh, stakeholders that that's really not the town's plan to go to three lanes each direction on a road. Um, that's kind of not in the character of the town. We looked at other ways. Um, it's still an option, so not throwing that completely off the table. Um, but our goal here was to say, well, if you didn't do that, how could you still make it work at LOSD? So this is, um, a concept called the median U-turn. It's implemented, um, across North Carolina in different forms. It's predominantly implemented in Michigan, um, where it's been for decades. Um, but the idea here is that you would, uh, instead of making a left turn at the main intersection, you would either turn right and make a U-turn, come back, or you would make a U-turn and then make a right turn. Um, so this, it, it greatly makes the efficiency, the efficiency of the intersection go up because you're not waiting on left-turn vehicles to clear the intersection. Um, and it also cuts down on the number of vehicular angle collisions that could happen. Um, so again, it's just a concept. We wanted to come up with a way to achieve those goals, um, without going to a six-lane section here. Another concept, again, um, looking at a couple of different things at the intersection right out here at Golfie and Rockfish. Um, looking at this intersection and having worked on, um, a lot of roundabout feasibility studies across the US and looking for, um, things that might, um, solve some of the issues at this intersection such as heavy delay and queuing, um, also a pretty high crash, uh, crash frequency. Um, looking at what are the ways that you could, uh, solve some of those issues? Um, one is One is to do kind of traditional widening, making the intersection potentially a five-lane section with left-turn lanes or right-turn lanes. Another way to do that is to keep it single-lane, but do a roundabout. The roundabout is an intersection that's been implemented around Fayetteville recently, really over the past ten, fifteen years. It is a way to greatly reduce the severity of collisions and also make for a more efficient traffic flow because you don't have to stop at the intersection if there's no one coming. So, again, it's an option. We were able to draft a concept that greatly cuts down on the impacts, the right-of-way impacts of this, but there is definitely a trade-off. So, while keeping kind of all the options on the table, we went with this as our preferred concept based on kind of all of the data that we looked at. Another intersection that we took a look at within town was the Camden and Rockfish Road intersection. This is currently under design and under evaluation by NC DOT. It's actually a feasibility study. It's not designed yet, but looking at ways to turn the, the scissors or bowtie intersection into a couple of different intersections and really teeing it up, making it a little bit safer to drive through. We don't have to yield to oncoming traffic if you're making a left turn, and then also just kind of making it a little bit more walkable. Crossing the intersection it is today, there's not a whole lot out there for you, so looking at ways to kind of make that a little bit better. At this time, we have not chosen either one of those concepts, and we're going to be respectful to the other NC DOT project that is examining those at this time. So, looking at all of the draft project recommendations that was released in the final technical report last, last month, FAMPO staff are going to take a series of recommendations within the project and draft them, look at local input, again, refine, utilizing those to prioritize which projects that they then ask for NC DOT funding in the next prioritization process. That will happen kind of over the next couple of years. Actually, I think it's later this fall will be the, the first set in that process. So, if you want more information, I know I've probably gone over here, but there's, the project report will be posted on the FAMPO website, and I've listed Joel's information, and then please contact me if you have any other follow-up, any details that you'd like to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate the fact that this was done. This is something that will help us with traffic congestion, but I think the main thing for our citizens to understand is that it's also a way to get it in front of DOT for funding. You have to have a plan to get funding, and this is one way when they do these kinds of studies, that then they come back and, and they prioritize it for funding. And I think we're up there because of the number of cars that travers our roads. I know we're already being considered for some additional funding because growth has been so much. So, I appreciate everything you've done, and I appreciate you coming this evening to share. Is there anything or any comments from the board?
I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, okay.
Is there anything during the studies to this point that can be done between the railroad trussel and the other end of town?
The, you're asking about providing more connections across the railroad tracks?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any way we can relieve that pressure? Because, you know, the expansion at 301 now is
Mm-hmm.
Potentially going to throw a lot more traffic into a bottleneck already. So, is there any way that we can do anything about relieving some of that pressure on Main Street from the trussel to the other end of town?
One of the alternatives here was the NC-162 extension that would create a parallel route to NC-59 from I-95, so that's one way we looked at it. Predominantly, we were trying to shy away from widening Main Street through middle of town based on some of the feedback we heard. And again, that objective to really keep the town's historic nature and not disrupt that through the middle of town. So, those are kind of the things we looked at. There's not an easy solution to where that underpass is. That's how we examined it.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Were our public safety departments, were they involved in the process?
They were. We had several folks. The fire department was invited to the meetings. As far as stakeholders go, we did have representatives from the school board, and that's pretty much the extent of it.
Mr. Cruz was very involved with the project, and I know he took a lot of stuff back to the emergency groups for them to look at.
I don't know if there's any concerns about the roundabout with our fire trucks?
We did pass along some information. Anytime there's a roundabout, especially one that's right next to a fire station, there's a lot of questions and feedback, such as that. There is a pretty large amount of information about how to turn even large ladder trucks in roundabouts and how to design them using a truck apron and so forth to really make that possible. So, I feel pretty confident that that alternative, if designed, and again, this would be a later project, the roundabout feasibility would be, if designed correctly, that it would not be an encumbrance to the public safety.
And school buses, I guess, too?
Yes, same. It, it may actually improve conditions based on improving traffic flow.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel, for coming this evening. At this time, I have one other proclamation to read, and this is recognizing 100 years of warrant officer association service, whereas warrant officers serve as the quiet professionals, and whereas the Fortress Brackston Bragg Silver Chapter Warrant Officer Association has been in existence for 100 years, and whereas the association is an approved nonprofit that raises money and gives it away assisting surrounding communities and families through chapters located around the world, and whereas the Fort Bragg chapter is one of the largest chapters and provides VA visits, wounded warrior donations, habitat programs, and food pantry donations to include holiday gifts for families. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, to hereby proclaim Monday, July 9th, 2018, as the Fort Bragg Silver Chapter Warrant Officer Association's 100th Centennial Celebration in the Town of Hope Mills in tribute to warrant officers on active duty, reserve, guard, retired, and their families, and urge all citizens to join us in honoring you and remembering your service. Okay? Okay. Next, we have no public hearings, and the next thing we have is public comments. A reminder with public comments, each speaker is limited to three minutes of the total comment period, and we have two that have signed up for comments, and the first one is... Mr. Bill Spate.
Good evening. I'm Bill Spate, United States Air Force Lieutenant Colonel, retired. I'm a Hope Mills resident of 43 years. My military record reflects 24 declarations, 13 in combat, including the Distinguished Flying Cross. I come before the board as a veteran and resident, and my purpose tonight is to ask the board a very simple question. Would someone please say the status of the proposed Lone Survivor project presented to the board?
Madam Mayor, I don't think we can comment on that because it's, that was conducted within closed session. Is that correct, sir?
I believe that's correct. I, I guess... I, I think what we can say is that something was, that a proposal was presented to the board, that the board discussed it and declined to accept the proposal.
Folks, I may have three minutes, but please don't assault me or the rest of the town by hiding behind this executive session cloak. There are no secrets in Hope Mills. If you don't believe it, go to McDonald's or Hardee's the next morning, and you can find out all about what happened. The proposal, according to the Lone Survivor people in Houston, Texas, was presented, and they have not received a positive response. Though it may be an issue closed to the Hope Mills, or the Hope Mills Board, and you may not be able to address it, I think a project of this magnitude should be made aware of the public. This Commissioner Legg and I served on the joint, the planning board for several years, and we spent a good bit of time over one lot. We're talking about a major project. Might it be appropriate for me to say what the Lone Project, excuse me, the Lone Survivor project is in public? First, it's common knowledge, and I appreciate your hiding behind the cloak, but for the attending town people and press, let me say a bit of what this is all about. The Lone Survivor Foundation is a nonprofit organization that provides therapeutic retreats to service members and families who are affected by post-traumatic stress, mild traumatic brain injury, chronic pain, and military sexual trauma. I trust you have heard that before. In 2017, 38 retreats for 335 veterans and families were held at no cost. The US Department of Veterans Affairs estimates PTSD affects... Is that my three minutes?
Yeah, it is. I'm sorry.
For the attending people, I will say this. I have a copy of my presentation, pictures of the project, and quite a bit of information that I would like for the town to share regardless of hiding behind, and I challenge the board for hiding behind this closed session, and his attorney knows. So, unless I'm given an additional couple of minutes, thank you for the time.
This next speaker is Mr. Joe Riddle.
Thank you, Mayor Warner, members of the town board. My name is Joe Riddle, and I'm a 62-year resident of Fayetteville. I thought I was going to be in Hope Mills. I lived in Gatesport and managed the club back in the 70s, and we were hoping that we were going to be part of Hope Mills, but somehow y'all gave us away to Fayetteville. What I, the reason I wanted to speak, I was trying to be here for the discussion about the sign ordinance. I just have some concerns because I'm not real sure exactly where the town's trying to go with the sign ordinance. I own some properties on Main Street, and some are developed and some aren't. I'm more concerned right now with the ones that are already developed. One I manage for another owner, which is the old Hope Mills Plaza that Mr. Henley used to own, and when I took it over in maybe about '05, helping manage it, there were seven or eight pylons out there. It was ridiculous. Every store had a pylon, and we were able to combine all those signs into two, two pylon signs. But if you read the ordinance the way it's written now, those are, some of those might be out of code. You know, the roads have been widened a lot over the years. That's an old shopping center. I mean, it's the oldest one in town. And so, I'm not real sure if the, if the signs are far enough from the right-of-way. You know, they've had a recent project with the islands. They're getting ready to do a project on Camden Road. I have Pine Knoll, which is a little center with a Japanese restaurant. It used to be Beefo Brady's. My pylon there is 108 square feet, and this code allows for 100, so it's eight square feet over the code, unless I add another shop, because if you add another shop, you get 10 more square feet. But anyway, my point is, you know, I don't know how you're going to grandfather people. I don't know how soon you're going to make them tear their sign down if it doesn't meet code. I mean, what is the purpose? I know that the letter I got from Chancellor, you know, he was really pushing the problems with portable signs, which I don't have any portable signs, and I understand Fayetteville used to have a lot of those with the flashing arrows and all that, and also about temporary banners, which really, the only time we have temporary banners is when you have a grandote. And I think that limiting it to one week is really, that's really short. I think it, it ought to be a month, but two weeks would be better. But I think Fayetteville's a month on temporary banners. But I do understand you have a problem. People put in these, we buy house signs everywhere, and you have to have some rules. So, I'm not against the rules. I just wanted to bring up these questions and see if there's a way that y'all could answer those for me so I would know what to expect on the ones. And I really believe that there will be hundreds of code violations if you get strict and follow this code and people aren't grandfathered. There's a lot of signs that are too close to the right-of-way now, and there's probably going to be more road projects here, too. So, that's, that's all I had, and I appreciate working with the town. I love Hope Mills. It's gotten so strict in Fayetteville. I've come out here. I'm hoping y'all are not going to get too strict. Fayetteville ran me off from my own town, and I'm, I'm getting ready to do some nice things on Main Street that the town will like. I'm going to bring some good restaurants and retailers that, that you don't have that you need, so I hope to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Riddle, we did go to a five-year transition period on that, or going to. We haven't, we haven't finalized anything yet. That's what we're looking at.
And they'll be, it'll be brought back to the board at our next board meeting, and then it'll be going to the joint planning board for approval. So, there's a process, but they did say tonight that five years would be the grandfathered time.
So, in five years, if your sign is too close to the right-of-way, you'll have to move it.
Right.
Pick it up and move it.
Right.
And then, you, you're also thinking about going to no pylon, so you'll have to throw the pylon away and build a monument?
Well, that's where...
That's going to be really expensive for people that, you know, that, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, like Mr. McClam owns the, the Hope Mills Plaza that Henley and Yarber used to own, and he's spending 120 grand, I think, behind the center, right, and 140 grand paving that alley that the town gave up. It's dirt back there that connects those two streets that go beside it. It's going to be expensive to, you know, five years is very long. It goes by just like that. I'm 62, and it seems like I was 30 yesterday.
I know the feeling.
Thank you.
There's going to be a lot of people that this is going to impact that may not know how much it's going to impact them until it, until they get the letter, so.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor, if you may, Mr. Spade, if it's okay, a fellow elected, is it okay for us to instruct our town attorney to send a letter to Lone Survivor regarding our decision in closed session? Would that be okay?
That would be fine.
Is that okay with you?
Yes.
What was the question again?
Is it okay for us to instruct the town attorney to send a letter regarding our decision regarding the Lone Survivor proposed project?
I highly recommend it.
Would that be okay? You guys okay with that?
Yeah, I believe a phone call has been made, but we'll, we'll send a letter.
Yeah, if we could codify a letter or something?
Yep.
Thank you.
Next, we have our consent agenda, and on the consent agenda, we have consideration of approval of the minutes from the June 18, 2018 regular meeting, consideration of approval of the minutes from the June 18, 2018 closed session, and consideration of the mosquito agreement with the town of Spring Lake. Is there anything you'd like moved from the consent agenda, or is the consent agenda approved as read?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
All who's in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Old business, consideration of the Year-in Budget Amendment Number 40 in the amount of $231,400 for FEMA repairs. Is there, Ms. Adams, you have anything you want to say in reference to this?
No, Madam Mayor, this is just cleaning up some bookkeeping issues.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Does anybody have any questions?
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 40 for the FEMA road repairs in the amount of $231,400.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
All who's in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, we have new business, consideration of the ordinance 2018-02 for a charter amendment to alter the terms served by board members to four-year staggered terms and Resolution 2018-14 for special election referendum.
So, this is the, the ordinance that we've discussed a couple times. The, the only substantive change to the ordinance, and it's very minor, is just at the very end where we, we say that the, it only takes effect upon approval of majority vote of the citizens of Hope Mills as directed by the board. So, the ordinance is, is written here in Tab 4, and then the last page of that, you'll also see a resolution that the board would also need to adopt along with the ordinance that would ask, you know, be an official request by the board to the Board of Elections to place this on the November election.
Need separate motions?
Separate motion for the ordinance and then also for the resolution. I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions?
Motion to approve consideration of ordinance 2018-02 for a charter amendment to alter the terms served by the board members to four-year staggered terms.
Have a motion, have a second. Have a motion, have a second.
I'll second that motion. I just wanna make sure that the citizens of the town have the right to make this choice and not us.
That'll be the next motion. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
And motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash fourteen for special election referendum.
Have a motion, have a second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, we have consideration of the town water quality testing policy for Hope Mills Lake, and I'll turn this over to our town manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let our stormwater administrator, because I tasked her with the project of coming up with a sampling policy that we could implement, even though we are not required to. In the best interest of health and, public health and safety, we feel that it's something that we would like to do. And if you all approve, then we'll implement it. I believe our town attorney has reviewed it. I'm not sure if he's got any concerns about it.
Yeah, I, I took a look at it, and I may wanna mess around with the language just a little bit. But this is, this is, you know, to give y'all a good sense of what type of regulation we're looking for and what type of ordinance we're looking for. I don't think it's ready to necessarily vote and adopt tonight, but this is just to put it in front of the board for consideration.
We can bring it back at the next meeting, once he makes his recommend, recommended changes, if that's the wishes of the board. But I'm gonna let Ms. Brown kind of go over the, the meat of it.
Okay, good evening. Um, I'm just gonna be brief. I know you guys have the copy. What we did was basically mimic what Wake County is doing. So in my conversations with the state representatives, basically, we are, we're not required to do any type of testing, and we're not required to do any type of notification. But in the best interest of the residents in the town, and also the folks that are coming from outside of town to use our facilities, we feel like it's probably best to have something in place. This is not a very in-depth policy. It is just a policy in writing for our own internal sampling. And what we did was mimic Wake County's, which was at the recommendation of the state. Theirs is actually done through their county health department. So they are required to do it. But the requirement, some of the things that they do, some of the testing that they do is not actually, there are no standards for North Carolina. They're using EPA standards, which North Carolina does not recognize the standards or ha- has not adopted those standards set by the EPA. So what you're looking at is basically just an overview of the reason that we're doing it, why we're doing it. And obviously, there's some legal language in there. We, we're planning to do, continue doing water sampling once a month from April to September. If we do get high fecal bacterial levels, there is the potential for the town to close the swimming area down. That's if needed. We feel like the signage, which is part of this, we're gonna put up some signage down at the lake, which is just a notification to anybody using the lake that, hey, you know, everything's good. It's always gonna be swim-at-your-own-risk. We don't know what's coming through there on a daily basis. That water's constantly moving. We can go in and take a grab sample right now, and five minutes later, take a grab sample in the same spot, and it's gonna come up very different. So we're also gonna be testing once a year, not every month, from April to September, but just once a year for E. coli and Enterococci. Those are different types of bacteria. Those are the two that the state of North Carolina does not have any standard levels for. EPA has set some, but we're going to go ahead and sample so that we have a baseline of what is in the lake each year at the beginning before we open. The notification quite obviously is exactly what it is. It's to notify the public of what we found, and it will be swim-at-your-own-risk unless the town staff and town manager or town board decides to close down the swimming area, which we have the ability, per this policy or ordinance, to actually do. The signage will be simple, green, yellow, red, just like the stoplight. I think everybody can follow that. We will probably need to have it in English and Spanish as well. We're currently working on a, like a draft of the sign, so that will come back before you as well. And then the fourth page that you're looking at is all Dan's page. That's not my forte, so he'll have to go through that. I know that they actually have, Wake County has some, they have the ability to find if you violate. And I'm not sure we're necessarily looking at that. Dan and I had a brief conversation about it, but I'm sure he'll provide comments to us with his recommendation on the legal aspect. So are there any questions about the policy or why we're putting it in place from the board or mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is there any estimated cost associated with this at this time that you know of?
With what?
Testing and results in there.
So the testing lab that we use is Microback. I can tell you that the E. coli sample and the fecal sample together was fifty dollars. I know the fecal sample was thirty-two. So for each sample we take is thirty-two dollars to test.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
How frequent are we gonna test in the future?
So we will be testing from April until September, once a month. Unless we find something that is extremely high, then we would test once weekly, basically. For, or it's five samples over a thirty-day period.
Okay.
And that's to find out what's coming through, kinda like we did before.
Yep.
The numbers were really, really high. So we did the sampling, everything, most everything came back. Fifteen of the sixteen samples came back well below the state limit. So, I mean, I, I feel, I felt confident that we weren't opening up a swimming area that was gonna be contaminated with fecal bacteria, so.
Beth, are we, each month are we testing in a different location?
So we have, there are four, the four sample sites that we gave you at the very beginning. Those are the four set sites that we will be sampling. And we've got one in the swimming area, one on the opposite side of the lake, one coming over the dam, and then one at the very headwaters of the lake.
Okay.
And I feel that gives us representative of kinda what's going on around the whole lake, not just the swimming area.
Right. Okay.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, and in consultation with the state lady, I believe she indicated that was a, that was well above what...
So...
Oh, yeah.
What we needed to...
Apparently, the Wake County does, they, they only sample the beach area. They don't sample, you know, else where in the lake. But we know that it's not just the beach area that's being used. So I feel like, you know, we need to get something that's representative of the whole lake and not just that one small area.
Yeah, it seems like this time last year, I thought it was the state to shut down Falls Lake swimming area, but it could've been Wake County. I'm not a hundred percent on that.
I don't, I don't know. We're not in a area that normally has water quality issues, with the exception of the Gen X thing, which is a completely separate thing. But that doesn't affect this lake, what's been happening with Gen, Gen X. We don't have anything coming in.
Yeah, we're upstream.
So, but...
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth, for all your work on this.
We'll bring this back to you once Mr. Hartsock has had an opportunity to comment on it. We'll bring it back for your approval.
Okay. Next, we have consideration of the purchase of a twenty-eighteen Roughneck Big River floor-flap bottom boat with Yamaha F-seventy-four stroke motor, trailer, and additional accessories per attached quote from A.K. McCallum Company for the amount of sixteen thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and sixteen cents. This is behind tab six.
Yep, Madam Mayor, this is the, the boat that Public Works requested and budgeted for, and the bud, you all approved the budget for the maintenance at the lake.
Okay.
Are we gonna use that boat enough to spend that much money?
Yeah, they're gonna clean the debris out of the lake, so that's the goal.
It's been budgeted for.
It's currently budgeted.
Been approved. So I make a motion, we approve this item on the agenda.
A second.
Have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by...
One quick question.
Yes, all right, question?
We get the sales tax back on that, don't we? Every six months?
Um...
Drew still here?
Every six months, or is it every yearly? Yearly. Do we get the sales tax, Drew?
We get sales tax back on that, Drew?
On the purchase of the boat. Reversed at, at the end of the year, I believe.
That's about five hundred dollars or something toward it. Okay.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, we have our manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I don't have a very long report. I will let you all know that Public Works staff will be meeting with Mr. Stephen Fleming on the seventeenth of July to go over his initial drawings, what he has prepared.
Great.
So hopefully, following that, I'm not sure if there'll be any tweaking or what, but I'm hopeful if not this, the second meeting in July, maybe the first meeting of August will be bringing something forward to you all. He'll be making a presentation. The Johnson Street sidewalk update on that, Public Works staff will be meeting with McGill Associates on July sixteenth to discuss the progress, or lack of progress perhaps, maybe is what I should say, on that project. Curbing at the lake parking lot to mitigate the water runoff through the concession stand. I had reported to you all that there was a problem. I believe that they had a even bigger problem this past weekend. We are addressing that separate issue, but they had a meeting today, and the contractor will start work tomorrow. And hopefully, that'll mitigate the water runoff that they are experiencing in the concession stand. The Rockfish Road sidewalk, the update to that is that the contractor has mobilized. The materials for the stormwater phase of the project have been delivered, and the initial asphalt cut done for excavation. However, after initiating excavation, the contractor has concerns with the depth of the fiber optic line. The line was previously identified, but no depth was known until the initial excavation began. McGill Associates engineers are discussing a way forward for box locations to continue with the project. So that's why you're not seeing any work over there presently. The final damaged area from Hurricane Matthew, the River Road project has been completed, with the exception of seeding on both sides of the culvert, and River Road has been opened. The request to DOT for the speed limit change for the northbound lane on, or the, on North Main Street, Public Works Director Hector Cruz received a call from the Office of Traffic Management of DOT. Technicians explained that for the speed limit to change on that location requested, other changes must take place at the intersection with timing and sequencing of the lights. The standards followed by traffic management are in accordance with Federal Highway Administration safety standards, and the local office of Division Six must follow their guidelines to make those changes. They will notify us when they make a determination on making that speed limit change. And then I just have one final thing, because I've been kind of reporting to you weekly how many code enforcement issues have been investigated. Last week, there were thirty-two inspections done on possible code enforcement violations, not signs, but code enforcement, other code enforcement violations. And eleven of those were found to be in compliance, and the remainder were, were issued letters, so. And that is all that I have, other than I just really want to publicly thank everybody that was involved in the celebration, the lake celebration, particularly the volunteers and the, the employees that worked. I did not hear one complaint from anybody that had to work or put in extra hours, especially Mr. Bullock. He did it without even a, you know, I'm tired. So I just wanted to publicly thank everybody that was involved, all the sponsors, all the, all the volunteers, the committee members, all of you that attended, and all of our citizens. I, I think it was very well received, and it, it couldn't have gone any better, in my opinion, so.
Just wait till next year, you'll see.
Well, we're hoping next year will be bigger and better, but maybe not five days in a row.
Right.
So, um, I think that was a bit, a bit, bit much. But they, they handled it, you know, very seamlessly. And not, like I said, not one complaint from anyone, so. I just really commend, we have excellent employees here, and we have excellent volunteers that are always ready and willing to help.
And the Lake Celebration Committee would like to request that they be called a festival celebration committee, if possible. The board would have to make that approval. And that they go ahead and, and we look at putting a spring festival in, comparing the calendars of the other municipalities, and putting the, they wanna headline the cardboard boat race as the, the main event. But they're looking at if we could go ahead and start that now, so that they could have a really big spring festival. And I know Mr. Bullock has heard them all say that this would be something they'd love to carry forward, but at a different time. Keep the Fourth of July separate, keep Old Mill Day separate, but let this be a spring festival.
You wanna put it on next agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can put it on the next...
That would be good, and I think maybe come up with, we can hit some calendar dates, 'cause what we could do is if we go ahead and get a date, we could start looking for sponsors. And we've already got, Members Credit Union has already volunteered to sponsor the cardboard boat race again for next year. Okay?
Along with VFW.
And the VFW, too.
With the trophies.
All right, is, is anything else? All right, next we go to our committee liaisons. Thank you. Mayor Proton Mitchell, Historic Preservation Commission.
Yeah, I had reported at our last meeting and about the workings of the meeting, as well as Town Manager Adams. But I'll reiterate that Jody Fraser and other committee members are working to finalize the, I believe, the ordinance and rules of procedure, some other documents to go to Mr. Dan Hartsock there. So, and then that come to us, and we will act quickly on it, once it gets to us. And we'd ask if you could turn that around pretty quick, 'cause it's been a long time coming. Will do.
Is that you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Lake Advisory Committee, Commissioner Edwards.
As we said before, we're meeting every other week, and so our next meeting will be the seventeenth.
Okay.
Is that not right?
Okay, Commissioner Legg and Appearance Committee.
I did not attend a meeting this past month. I don't think even had one.
Yeah, they did.
You did? Well, I missed it, but we were tied up in some other things. But we had another meeting on the same night or something. I don't remember what it was. And I didn't get the details on that, and I apologize.
Do you have Ms. Johnson, Ms., Kathy, would you, would you? You gonna have your minutes? Okay. Well, if we can get those minutes, then we can put those out.
Yeah, I need to get, you can get those minutes, make sure I have them, even if I'm there.
Okay, next we have Parks and Rec, Commissioner Larson.
Parks and Rec. We did not have a quorum, which is becoming a habit, I think. So I wanted to check with the rules of getting Kenny people that are gonna work on that committee that are gonna be there and help. He's got a full load. Uh, what it, what the rules are as far as how many meetings can they miss before it's time to open up the committee for new volunteers?
Yeah, I know we drafted...
We drafted something. I believe it's three, and it's up to the liaison to bring that back to the board.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So if you've got members that are missing three... So, if you've got members that are missing three consecutive meetings, then you can certainly bring that back to the board, and you all can vote to-
You just have to have the actual attendance dates, and then the board can vote to, uh, remove those, and then open it up for new members to apply.
And I will get with Kenny, and we'll get a list together.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Bell Flowers, Veterans Committee, and Rulak.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna start off with, um, this morning, I was honored and, um, humbled to represent the town and yourself as well at the, uh, one hundredth birthday of the United States Army War Officer Corps at ForceCom this morning. Uh, it took place at ten o'clock, and I read the, uh, resolution along with, uh, Mayor Proton from the City of Fayetteville, Ted Mon. And, uh, it was a huge event attended there in ForceCom headquarters. And if you've ever been in the building, right in the front part of that, they call it the Thunderdome, and that's where all the, you know, there's three different floors in ForceCom. Uh, so, and I thank you for allowing me, uh, the opportunity to do that. It was very rewarding. I was there, the dedication of the building. And I hadn't been back in over a year, so it was kind of, kinda great to go back to it. Uh, going on with the Veterans Affairs Commission, um, they met on June twenty-eighth, uh, all members attended. And, uh, continuing the work of, uh, uh, Hero's Homecoming, uh, for the November ninth through the twelfth, and the town's role in all the events. And I believe everything is gonna be centered on Sunday now, on, actually on Veterans Day, of what the town events are gonna be. I know Angie, um, from the committee, uh, is looking for a final report to her by June eighteenth, and I'll be, uh, working with the Chair, Alan Miller, to ensure that we've got that final report representing the municipality of Hope Mills in our efforts, uh, during that committee. Uh, there was one thing that they did ask, um, let me back up. Now, one other thing before I get to that. Is that I, I think this is a huge event that's coming our way in November, like, like in past, uh, Hero Homecoming events. Uh, this is the sixth one, and, um, I think we're going to, in fact, I know we are, we're gonna have a, schedule a joint meeting, Mayor, of, of, of all the, um, participants involved in this, and we'll probably either have it at the Chamber or over at the VFW. It'll be one of those locations, and, um, just to make sure that all of us, uh, that are participating in this event on Veterans Day are, are all doing the right thing at the right time, and, uh, everybody knows what everybody's doing. Sometimes you can, you can lose sight of that. So, um, that's something that, uh, the committee talked about at length, uh, and will be, uh, setting that joint meeting up. The last thing, uh, the committee asked, uh, and, and this is a, this is a pretty big, uh, question. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna ask it on behalf of the committee. Is that in August eighteenth is, uh, Cumberland County has a huge event called the Purple Heart Dinner, and a lot of, a lot of veterans from a lot of municipalities are invited to go there. Um, and to represent the other municipalities. Uh, I don't know if, in the past, if Hope Mills has ever attended the Veterans Affairs Commission, or any elected officials for that matter, has ever attended the function.
Mayor Dever did.
Did, okay. So, I wanna ask that, I, I wanna ask on behalf of the committee, is there some type of funding that we could, could have for at least some of the members of the committee, uh, to attend, to represent Hope Mills, uh, during this, uh, huge event that honors our Purple Heart veterans, uh, from not only Cumberland County, but from our great state? I just, I, I'm just gonna ask them on the behalf of the committee if there was something we could do to do that. If not, then I'll take that back to the committee. Other than that, Mayor, that's the, uh, that's the report. Uh, Rulak will not meet again until I think it's August, so, um, that's the only report I have.
Uh, and on the Hero's Homecoming, just so you know, I attend those meetings along with the Chamber and along with Millstone fourteen, and then our Veterans Council. So, the, the joint meeting is what we did last year, and we held it at the Chamber, because there's a conference room there. But with Hero's Homecoming, um, Hope Mills is very involved, and we've got probably more volunteers involved than any of the other municipalities.
We do.
Um, and, and the idea being to unify more of what we do. The other thing is at eleven o'clock on that Sunday, they're asking for anybody that has the church bells or any kind of bells to be rung at, at the eleventh hour on the eleventh day. Um, so that's something else that we're, we've got information out to the churches, but we're gonna try to encourage that in Hope Mills also. Um, and then I guess the other thing that's important about this event is that, um, this year's, they're tying it to volunteerism, and they're asking for everybody to donate or give six hours to volunteer to do something to make, um, the town better or your county better, but there, there's more information coming on that also, 'cause they're looking at getting more people involved and working together, unified. Okay, next we have, um, staff comments. So, I'll start with Ms. Starley. Do you have anything?
I would just like to thank Melissa and Tiffany, who's not here, for giving me a great welcome and getting me started off on the right foot.
Good, thank you. Any more comments, Ms. Adams? No? Mr. Hartzog? Okay, then we have official comments. Does anyone want to start? You wanna start with Commissioner Legg? Do you have official comment?
It'll be very short. I wanna thank everyone for all their help, donation of time through your volunteering with the Lake Celebration and the Police Department, the town staffs, and especially Parks and Recreation for all their hard work for making the return of the Lake Celebration as great as it was. And I look forward to it next year. Thank you.
Commissioner Larson?
I'm good.
Commissioner, uh, Bell Flowers?
Just like to thank all the speakers that took the time tonight to come up here to the podium and speak, and the residents who came here to hang out with us tonight. It was a productive meeting. I do wanna share one thing. Some folks told me something on July fourth after the fireworks. Sometimes you don't, y- y- you don't hear that you were right, or somebody was wrong in what they said. These folks thought passionately that, that the fireworks should've been back down at the lake. And after, after Wednesday night, these guys came up to me and they said, "We're sorry. We know now. We know exactly now why they're at the lake par- why they're up at the park and not down at the lake." Because it took them an hour and a half to get out and get through Hope Mills, and get, and just, just try to get through the traffic jams. And they clearly understood that, and they wanted me to know that. Uh, and I really appreciate that, and I just wanted to share that, you know, we're not a, we're not a town of six thousand anymore. We couldn't have done it at the, at the lake. I mean, I wanted to do it. I mean, I wish we could've done it. But you try to do that, and you just lock up the town. And I know that our, our fire chief and police chief know exactly what I'm talking about. It's hard to manage the traffic as it is. But I just wanted to share some comments from some, some folks. It was their first time watching the fireworks in Hope Mills, and that's what they told me. Thank you, Mayor.
Mm-hmm. Commissioner Edwards?
Um, Kenny Poindexter is getting all sorts of awards here lately. But I would like to say as, um, a board member of the Chamber of Commerce that he was approached by our president to become a board member of, um, Chamber of Commerce. So, Kenny, you've done it again. And, um, I would also like to say, remind people that three-fourths of our population is military-connected. And, um, I, I know we've already made a decision and everything, but I, I just regret that we didn't look further into the non-survival. That's all I've got to say.
Mayor Proton Mitchell?
I'm good. Trying to get you all out of here in record time for Hope Mills.
All right.
I too appreciate everyone coming tonight, and I too will say that being, um, a military brat, being, uh, the daughter of a Vietnam veteran, being the aunt of Andy Strickland, who is suffering from P- PTSD, who is also living in a home that was given to him, I strongly support anything that helps our veterans and our active-duty military. And the reason why I say that is because we have become the community for active-duty military and retirees. And what better way to so- show our support as a town than to recognize the fact that our small community, made up of so very few people as little as ten years ago, now, if you check, you'll find that a greater majority of them have some type of attachment to Fort Bragg. And I think that is something that we need to pay close attention to, because we are the place where active-duty want to come. Our great schools, our great small-town attitude, and most importantly, how we treat people in our, in our community. So, I cannot go without saying that, because I truly believe that military means a lot, not only to Cumberland County, but it means a lot to Hope Mills. We see that here. You see Gene Clark every meeting. You see Greeley Mitchell, Jessie Bell Flowers, and tonight, Bill Spate. And I guarantee you, David, military. And there's others in this room that have attachment, that I just feel strongly that we need to support those that support us. And having said that, is there anything else that's good for the-
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn? And second?
Second.
Have a good evening.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted you guys to know. I heard completely from Chief Com about the fireworks.
Oh, I thought so.
Yeah.
I think the best example was the man that took the video at the lake.
Man, I was so glad.
The video of the fireworks over the lake, they weren't even at the lakes.
Yeah. So, how many times do you hear that?
I'm good, how are you?
You know, you guys were right, y'all made the right call. You don't ever hardly hear that. You hear the others.
Yes.